Well, we got a full slate now.
Hope is still here.
Yay.
There's still hope.
There's still hope in St. Charles County.
I'd like to call the work session order. Welcome, everybody, to St. Charles County Council Work Session. We're going to be discussing Bill Number 4743, which is related to medical marijuana. Who'd like to lead off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, John Watson, at the county councillor's office. I'd like to do a brief intro and then introduce a couple of my staff who've been working on this with other people in the county. But a couple of things just to point out. A lot of activity beginning in January of one of this year in 19, when Amendment Two came online, but most of it was Department of Health promulgating regs. And that came on, and it took all the way up until the middle of June to get that rulemaking finalized. What we saw from other jurisdictions is they jumped out in March and April and put a lot of things in their ordinances and passed those into law, and now they're going to have to come back and change all those because as the rulemaking went along, new things started evolving, and we'll get into a couple of those that are happening tonight. As a result, where we are is, right now, everything's final. We kind of know the rules of the road, and we'll discuss that in the overview of what we need to be doing, what are limitations and what we can and can't do around this issue. And then we'll also cover a lot of things that we don't know yet, and that's just a reality of a lot of unknowns that, as this plays out going forward. So with that, I'd like to introduce Holly Mogge-Josh from my office and Brian Wise. Brian joined us in January. For better or for worse, he went to Notre Dame undergrad and Notre Dame Law School. He still thinks Newt Rockne and the Four Horsemen are coming back sometime soon.
Be awesome.
And we explain to him every day that's not happening, but he still lives under that belief. So with that, I'll turn it over to Holly and Brian. Thank you.
All right. So before we dig into the particulars of the bill, we just wanted to take some time to sort of give a roadmap of where the bill fits in, both nationally and statewide and locally, and let you know about some of the levers that you all have to pull and decisions that you can make. But my hope is that this context will be helpful for you. So we'll talk first about marijuana regulation nationwide and what the trends are, what Amendment Two says in particular, what the state's role is in implementing medical marijuana in Missouri, and then the local government's role. And we'll end by talking about the timeline and where things will stand and what will happen between now and January 1st of 2020. As you all probably know, marijuana still remains illegal under federal law, and it's still a Schedule I drug under the Controlled Substances Act. But the federal government is really not spending a lot of time looking at or worrying about states that are allowing either medical or recreational marijuana. And since 2014, the Rohr-Bacher-Far Amendment has prohibited the Department of Justice from spending any of its money to interfere with states that are implementing any sort of statewide marijuana programs. So though it technically remains illegal under the books, states have mostly been free to implement the laws that they, either their citizens or legislatures, have chosen to pass. Nope, I may have frozen up a bit. Ashley, I'm having some trouble. I don't know where my mouse went.
There we go.
Okay, there we go. Okay. So here's just a brief timeline of the states that have approved medical or recreational marijuana. You can see California was the first, way back in 1996. Missouri and Utah both approved medical marijuana on November 6th of 2018, and Michigan, on that same day, approved recreational. Illinois is the most recent state added to the list. It was the 11th to approve recreational marijuana, and the governor just signed that on June 28th of this year. It is set to go into effect on January 1st, 2020, as well. Coming up, in 2020, Idaho will have medical marijuana on its ballot, and Florida and Arizona will both have recreational. The trend, of course, is moving toward legalization with all of the 11 states that now have recreational marijuana, first having begun with medical marijuana.
So Holly, did I count that right? In 33 states have at least medical marijuana?
Correct.
Wow, okay.
Yes. Here is a map showing similar things, those states that have recreational and those that have medical. And already, this map is outdated because it lists Illinois just as medical, and as I just mentioned, the governor just approved recreational there, too. Missouri Constitution Amendment Two went before the Missouri voters this past November by a statewide initiative vote. Well, our percentage names disappeared somehow, but the blue is the approval and the green was the folks voting no. So it was approved by 65.6% of the voters statewide and 66.8% of the voters in St. Charles County. So St. Charles County voters actually approved Amendment Two at a greater proportion than voters throughout the entire state. The purposes of Amendment Two are threefold. First, to allow for the cultivation, production, transportation, sale, purchase, and administration of medical marijuana, to ensure that patients have access to medical marijuana, and to make changes to Missouri law that are necessary to implement Amendment Two. However, Amendment Two does have its limits. It does not change the current civil and criminal laws governing non-medical use of marijuana, so we still are not a recreational use state. It does not legalize the public consumption of medical marijuana, so that still has to occur in private. It doesn't allow for driving under the influence of marijuana, and it does not permit a person to consume marijuana for medical use in a jail or a correctional facility. There are five medical marijuana-related facilities that exist under Amendment Two and the regulations that have been imposed. They're pretty much self-explanatory. The cultivation facility is where the marijuana can be grown. Those can be indoor or outdoor, and there are limitations on the size and the number of plants that can exist. The products manufacturing facility are where any sort of marijuana-infused foods, things like gummy bears, brownies, soups, any of that stuff would take place, and that is the only place where that process is allowed to happen. So that includes the edibles, tinctures, oils, botanicals, and capsules. And that is where the extraction process takes place. The testing facility is where the marijuana is tested to make sure that it doesn't include other contaminants, banned chemicals, and to make sure that it's fit for human consumption, and there will be up to 10 of those throughout the state of Missouri. And those do have some pretty specific requirements as far as accreditation, requirements for directors, that they have experience and expertise, and that those can be owned by the same folks who, for example, are running a dispensary or who are cultivating the marijuana, because as you might expect, those might cause some conflicts. The fourth is the dispensary facility, which is where folks will be able to buy the marijuana products. They are only allowed to sell marijuana products and related paraphernalia, and so can't be selling other things. And then the transportation facility is actually new based on the regulations. It was not initially set forth separately in Amendment Two, and that allows, as you might guess, for the transportation of marijuana. It does contemplate that there can be delivery to folks at their homes, and then any of the other marijuana-related facilities can also transport marijuana between one another. There is a seed-to-sale tracking so that they will be able to keep track of where the marijuana goes as it goes to each of these different types of facilities for cultivation, for testing, processing, and then for sale. In Missouri, the folks who are allowed to use the medical marijuana are the qualifying patients. So those are Missouri residents who have been diagnosed with one or more qualifying medical conditions. They have to get a certification from a physician stating that they have one of these conditions, and they range from all sorts of things like cancer and glaucoma and HIV or AIDS, any terminal illness. And then the last one is basically the catch-all for any other medical condition that, in the professional judgment of a physician, could be helped by marijuana. Once a person gets his or her physician certification, there are three types of identification cards that exist. One is the qualifying patient identification card that allows those folks to have their medical marijuana. A qualifying patient can purchase up to four ounces of dry, unprocessed marijuana in a 30-day period and can possess up to a 60-day supply, which would be eight ounces of marijuana. The qualifying patient cultivation card allows patients to grow their own marijuana, and a person is allowed to have up to six flowering plants, up to six non-flowering plants, and up to six clones. So there could be a total of 18 plants, but six of which are supposed to be flowering at any one time, and that person is allowed to possess up to a 90-day supply of marijuana. For any of these, a patient is also allowed to get an authorization from a second independent physician stating that he or she should not be bound by these limits of four ounces or eight ounces or 12 ounces, and then those folks are allowed to possess even more than that. So the third category is the primary caregiver, and so a person can be a primary caregiver for someone else and can then purchase and maintain and cultivate the medical marijuana on behalf of that person. And there are some limitations, that one person can be a primary caregiver for up to three people, and as you can imagine, there's lots of, you know, math, and you could be quite strategic based on, you know, how many plants you have and how many folks for whom you are a primary caregiver, that sort of thing, but there are some limitations there.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Holly, if somebody violates those restrictions and has nine ounces instead of eight, will they be prosecuted under the existing marijuana laws? I mean, would they be illegally in possession? Are they going to have to pass a whole set of new laws in Jeff City, or will we have to pass a whole set of new laws?
We'll talk a bit about some of those recommendations. I think that, right now, we could use our current ordinances that prohibit any amount of possession, and as long as we're using those against folks who are exceeding the amounts that they're allotted to have, that would work. I think the best option, however, would be to revise our ordinances to specifically say that, you know, it's illegal to possess, you know, in excess of the amounts that are allowed by Amendment Two and by these regulations.
Steve, also, in the Amendment Two itself, when it discusses this, they've got a 60-day supply and 90-day supply. There are also some punishments written into it itself, which says that possession between the legal limit and up to twice the legal limit shall subject the possessor to department sanctions, including administrative penalty and loss of their patient identification card for up to a year. Purposefully possessing amounts in excess of twice the legal limit shall be punishable by imprisonment of up to one year and a fine of up to $2,000. So there's also some penalties built into it.
Can they create a crime by rule?
That's in the text of the amendment.
It's in the text of the amendment.
Huh? Oh, it's in the text of the amendment?
Of the amendment itself, yes.
Okay. And it's self-enforcing? You don't have to actually have a statute if it's in the Constitution?
Yeah.
Mr. Krown, you have a question?
I have a question. I want to just, you mentioned if they got a medical marijuana card, they were allowed to grow up to 18 plants. Is that correct?
If they have the cultivation card, then they are allowed to have up to six flowering plants, up to six non-flowering, and up to six clones.
18 total.
Yes.
Now, cultivation card, is that given out to just anybody that's got a medical marijuana? So if they say, "I need medical marijuana, I can't afford it, they can cultivate it?" Is that true? Is that restricted in any way?
Brian may be able to fill in the details. He is really the expert on the specific regulations, but I think the general contour is that there's a slightly greater fee, but really, there's no other...
Let me let you know where I'm going with this.
Yeah, absolutely.
When we toured the crime lab, okay, for the county police, and with the idea of expanding that crime lab, okay, they got a room where they keep all their marijuana evidence, okay, and all the stuff is sealed in plastic bags and sealed in glass container, and it reeks like hell still, okay? So if you've got somebody in a residential setting, and a husband's got a card and wife's got a card, and they grow 36 marijuana plants in their backyard in the St. Charles County subdivision, it's going to stink like hell, too. So that's where I'm going at. Is this law going to allow something like that to possibly happen?
I'd say two things. First, anyone who is cultivating at home is required to store that in a locked and secured facility, so no one else will be able to have access to it. And second, our ordinance has other nuisance provisions in it, including odor.
Okay.
Yeah, I think anybody that's probably would grow it, would grow it inside so it doesn't get stolen before they even get a chance to cultivate it.
So with that, with what he was just saying, the 36 plants, if that's the case, two people living in the same house, is that defined where they have 18 plants growing, and if they cut it down and then they have them stored in the house, then they continue to grow 18 more?
They can have up to a 60-day supply of the dried, unprocessed marijuana in addition to those plants.
But there's not a limit on the size of the plant, right? So you could have six flowering, but there's no one who says that it can only be 18 inches tall, right?
They have the six flowering plants, and then the other non-flowering and clones have to be up to 14 inches tall.
Up to?
Up to. So it's limited until you get rid of those six plants, then, you know, the new ones can go ahead and go over that range. But the other ones, there are different levels of maturity, the way they're setting this up, I believe, so...
I was just curious, because if you have six flowering and you really want to take care of those six flowering, you would need to put them probably in the basement or a vaulted room if you want it, because you could get them fairly good size.
Yeah.
At least from what I've heard.
You know, yeah, from what we've researched and gathered, they can get to a decent size as well, yeah.
Yeah.
But there are limits on the height of the plants, the ones, the non-flowering ones. There are limits on there.
So six mature plants is the intent, I think. For medical marijuana, for people who are under the age of 18, folks are allowed, juveniles are allowed to have medical marijuana if they are emancipated minors or if a parent or a legal guardian is the primary caregiver. And so then the parent or guardian submits that application, and then the card is issued to the parent or guardian there. As to taxes, Amendment Two explicitly makes local sales taxes and use taxes that are applicable to retail sales also applicable to the retail sale of marijuana, but we are not permitted to add any additional local taxes that are specific to marijuana or focused on it individually. It's just what is generally applicable is also applicable to this.
That's interesting. So we can put a cigarette tax on it, but we can't tax a joint?
Correct.
Is the tax revenue, can it, I'm sorry, am I interrupting you two?
Sorry.
Is the tax revenue that comes from this already designated, or is it just going to general revenue?
I believe the local portions would just be to general revenue.
Okay.
So that talks about Amendment Two and what it said specifically in the text of it. Now we'll talk more about the state's regulatory authority and the ways in which the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services has sort of filled in those blanks and filled in all of the rest of the regulations that are needed to really make this work. So Amendment Two grants the Missouri Department of Health and Human Services the ability to, I think it's actually Senior Services, the ability to promulgate rules necessary for the proper regulation and control, the cultivation, manufacture, dispensation, and sale of marijuana for medical purposes, to regulate the licensing, certification, and approval of the facilities and ID cards, and issue standards for secure transportation of marijuana products. And so that is what they did through several revisions and have now, as of May 24th, issued those final regulations. So their set of rules ensures regulation of each of these different areas, so the standards for the facilities, complaint processes, if folks are, you know, selling too much or not selling to people who have their cards, the penalties for violations, physician certifications, patient privacy, the tracking, the transportation, all of those details that we won't talk about each one specifically, or we would be here for a long time, but they are fairly comprehensive. And the standards for the medical marijuana facilities include things like operations, security, zoning, requirements for employees, safety codes, storage, signage, all of that stuff, including, as you mentioned, for the nuisance, the odor control plans, and record-keeping and tracking to make sure that we know where all the seeds and where all the marijuana is going and that folks aren't receiving more than they are authorized to receive. Since Missouri is the 32nd state to enact medical marijuana, I think they really tried to learn from lessons that other states have learned as they've gone through this process. So it is pretty comprehensive, and I think they have really anticipated a lot of the possible road bumps that could come up and trying to, you know, make it as smooth a process as possible. So Amendment Two provided for a number of minimum numbers of facilities. So cultivation facilities have to be at least one per 100,000 residents, which would mean there are about 60 statewide. Manufacturing facilities, one per 70,000, which would be 86 statewide, and a minimum of 24 licenses for dispensary facilities in each of the eight U.S. congressional districts. The department decided that they would stick to those minimum requirements right now, so that is what is allowed. And Amendment Two does say that if demand exceeds those numbers of facilities, then they have to increase the numbers, but for now, that is what they are going with. So applications have been filed with the state, a total of 543 applications, and fees of almost $4 million have been received by the state as of June 25th. You can see that though there are only 60 cultivation facilities that will be licensed in Missouri, there are almost 100 more than that, applications that have been filed. Dispensary facilities will have 192 total, which is...
So Holly, what you're saying is, so they're going to only allow that amount? Is that correct?
Yes.
The 60?
Mm-hmm.
So if there's already been 157 applications and nobody from St. Charles County either applied or gets one, then they won't be able to cultivate it in St. Charles County?
Correct. And we'll talk in a couple of slides about numbers of applications in both our congressional districts and in St. Charles County. There's really not a comprehensive way to know exactly which one fits where, and part of the regulations are a scoring system for the state to determine which applications they're going to grant for each of these types. But yes, there are far more dispensary facility applications that have been filed than will be licensed in the state. And for the manufacturing facilities, you can see that, at least as of June 25th, there were just under the number that will be licensed.
And Holly, you might mention that the Post-Dispatch won their sunshine suit, and so the numbers of applications available in St. Charles County are on their website.
Yes, and we have...
Are you going to go over those?
Yeah. So here, it is by congressional district, so as you know, St. Charles County is, part of it is in the second and part is in the third. So you can see that there have been 25 prefiled applications in the second and 43 in the third. So again, it's hard to know exactly how many of those, you know, for the second congressional district, since that's portions of St. Louis County and St. Charles, hard to figure out exactly which those would be. And then here, by county, that there are two...
This is what Jennifer was talking about.
Yeah. There are two cultivation facilities, applications that have been filed in St. Charles County, two manufacturing, and 16 dispensary. Again, we don't know exactly which of those are in which congressional district or which of those are in unincorporated areas that would be covered by your bill, but it sort of gives you an idea of the numbers. And of course, there are far more in St. Louis County than here, and you can kind of see the distributions there.
So when they prefiled, they didn't specify their exact location yet? They just, they filed saying they want to do it in whichever congressional district, but they didn't say, "We want to do it at 123 Elm Street."
That's a question I don't know. I believe they're, I don't know...
To be honest with you, and they don't have that information released, at least, and the full applications aren't going to be collected, start collecting, we should say, until August 3rd. So that might be when we get a little more information from them regarding more specific ideas.
I was curious, when they specify the exact address that they're...
And some of it is still dependent, too, on zoning regulations. So for example, you all have not yet decided, and we'll be looking now at which particular areas those will be allowed in. So all of it is a bit in flux, at least until that August 3rd deadline. So now I want to focus on what is probably most important to you all, and that is the role that local governments have in Amendment Two and in implementing medical marijuana. So two big things. First is that Amendment Two partially preempts you all from enacting many of these regulations that would conflict or contradict what is in Amendment Two or in the regulations. And Amendment Two says that local governments may not expressly ban medical marijuana. You cannot just say, "Nope, we're not doing it in this county," and you also can't enact any regulations that are unduly burdensome on the facilities that may want to open here.
Is "unduly burdensome" requiring the proper zoning for a cultivation facility? Okay? And where I'm headed at with that is the current bill allows cultivation facilities anyplace that's zoned agricultural, if I'm reading it correct.
Mm-hmm.
That's most of my district, most of his district. So you just built yourself your dream home, and you've got five acres of ground in St. Charles County. The medical marijuana cultivation facility is either going to have to look like an industrial building or a gulag or stileg, with a fence around it. I don't want that next to my house, and most of my people in my district wouldn't. So are we allowed to, for instance, I think appropriate places in industrial park or heavy commercial zoning, are we allowed to say, "Hey, you can cultivate it in the industrial park, but we don't want it in, you know, carte blanche, any place in agricultural zoning"? I would say maybe in agricultural zoning with a conditional use permit. If it's out in the middle of 500-acre field and it's a three-acre facility, nobody's going to care, but if you live next to it, you are going to care. So is that an acceptable way of regulating it?
So local governments are allowed to enact regulations that reasonably restrict the time, manner, and place of the different facilities. And so one of the options, and we'll talk more about it specifically here, right now, actually, is that there are two avenues that you all have, two levers that you can pull. So one is a separation requirement from places like schools, daycare centers, churches, residences, or residentially zoned areas, and that can be extended beyond 1,000 feet or shortened shorter than 1,000 feet. Again, this is still subject to the reasonableness requirement, that it can't be overly burdensome. So you could not say, you know, can't be within 100,000 feet of, you know, any residence, but something reasonable like that.
But it could be 2,000 square, 2,000 feet, and you could include a residential dwelling in that, could you not?
As the ordinance is drafted now, it does include residences or residentially zoned property, and the number right now is drafted to say, I believe, 750 feet. And we'll look in just a moment at what some of the other municipalities have done to sort of give you all an idea of what other folks are considering to be reasonable restrictions. And then, as I mentioned, the other item you can do is enact ordinances or regulations governing the time, place, and manner of operation of the medical marijuana facilities. So that would be largely the hours of operations of the dispensaries, that you can impose some of those restrictions, and the place and manner would be the zoning and business license standards.
Holly, has anybody done any research on these, like Colorado or so forth, and what kind of, what kind of crowd does it, do these things? I mean, I know nothing about, I don't smoke pot, never have, I don't know anything about these stuff, so what are going to be the expectations if there's a dispensary next to a QuickTrip or something? I mean, what are the expectations? Are there going to be a bunch of people that like drugs hanging out there? I mean, I don't have any idea, I really don't.
There is no public consumption, so people would not be allowed to smoke the marijuana or eat... or eat their edibles, anything like that, in the dispensaries or in public somewhere.
But don't you think we have to keep in mind that in the next couple, two to five years, that these probably will become dispensaries for recreational use?
I think that that's been a trend in a lot of states, yes, but I don't know that that would necessarily change rules on public consumption, or, or anything like that.
Holly, I've been told that from a cultivation standpoint, given of the climate that we have here in Missouri, that these things will probably all be grown indoors, do we, in your research, do you have, do you have a feeling for, are we really talking about warehouse-grown marijuana, or to Joe's statement, is it possible that it's going to be, I think he used the term gulag, or, you know, is there, is, are we really anticipating outdoor growing?
Brian may know that more specifically.
I think an indoor, in this area, an indoor facility would be, I mean, if I were making the personal decision, that's the way I would go, and I do know what you're saying about having the gulag in there, because it has to be eight-foot fences around the outside with barbed wire at the top.
With wire.
Yeah, so...
It'd look like a prison.
Yeah, well, it was screened in, so you can't really see through on the inside either, so it's not going to be the nicest views out in the agriculture.
The problem, you probably have, if someone wants to grow this, and they say, "Well, I'm putting up an agricultural fence, I'm putting up an agricultural building, and I'm, the product is allowed to be grown by your, by your zoning laws in agricultural area." I mean, there's nothing to stop them then, so they can put their eight-foot fence up, their metal building on there, and say it's an agricultural use of the property, and even though it might be next to a residential house, so, I mean, I'm not supportive of this unless you put a nice big buffer from any kind of residential house.
Yeah, we could, we could, of course, do that, make an amendment to that, to expand that out further, and also, we'll see in the next, I think it's the next slide over, there were some, some of the local state regs, or maybe it's a little further down.
What, what...
Yeah, oh, sorry.
Brian, is it...
Yes.
Yeah, what are the, what are some of the other counties, or are they using this 2,000, what's a reasonable, where, to Joe's point, I, I would not want it next to my house, and I wouldn't want to smell it, and I wouldn't want to see a bunch of lights and barbed wire fence, so what would be, what is 2,000 or 3,000 feet considered reasonable, non-burdened?
Here is what other municipalities within St. Charles County have done, and so they, this chart includes both the zoning areas where they have it, you can see on the distance, that second big box, the most that anyone has is 1,000 feet from childcare, schools, public parks, halfway house, correctional facilities, or other marijuana uses in St. Charles, and then O'Fallon has 1,500 feet from other marijuana uses. Others, St. Peters...
Other marijuana uses?
Yeah, so that would be from other...
Other cultivators?
Right, from another cultivator, from a dispensary, from a manufacturing facility, so...
I'm going to lose on that one.
Lake St. Louis only has 500 feet from residential zoning, so I would say five, within St. Charles County, 500 is the minimum, and 1,500 is the maximum that other folks have done.
Yeah, but the point is, for me and Joe and Mike, we have large farming areas, and so it seems to me that you would want to make it, you know, I, I think at least, at least 2,000 feet, but I mean, we can, I don't know, whatever the, but I just...
And just to be clear, I'm just talking about cultivation, okay?
Mm-hmm.
If, for instance, if they want to dispense it in a commercially zoned area, okay, I don't have a problem with that, but if they want to grow it in an agricultural area, you know, a lot of the folks in my district live in agricultural, my, my land is agro-zoned agricultural where I live, okay, and I don't want that next to me, nor does anybody else, so we've got to have the safeguards and the law for that.
Yeah, but I think we're only talking about 60 statewide, so it's not like you can have, like, you're going to have rows and rows of them.
With my luck, the two that might end up in this county want to be next to my home, okay, so they're, I just don't, I don't think that's...
Well, the good news is, your, your home will go up in value to someone.
If, if the two applicant, the two that are, for St. Charles County, when they get two licenses, does that mean, does that mean just one specific location, or does that give them the ability to have multiple locations?
It's for each location.
It's what?
For each location.
It is for each location, but they can combine them, if it's one entity applying for the two licenses, they can combine them and have them in one large facility, if that's...
Okay, but they can't have one license and have one in the Fiennes and Augusta and...
Correct.
St. Paul or whatever.
Could we require a conditional use permit for cultivation facilities in agricultural zoning districts?
I think that's certainly one thing you could consider, we would certainly want to make sure that we have safeguards in mind, and know that we are not going to be making regulations that are overly burdensome, and, you know, the answer can't be no to every single one, so...
Yes, but for instance, in my district, if somebody wants to grow it on a small plot in the middle of a 500 acre cornfield, it would be no problem, okay, but if a guy wants to build one next to, you know, somebody that lives on a five acre track with a home, and, you know, and a family, that's another thing, so I mean, that might be in a solution as well.
If we require wedding venues to get a CUP, I don't think that this would be overly burdensome, to say that, that a cultivation place would need to, need one as well.
And when it's built, it appears to have taken that approach, that they did the CUP for agricultural areas, and St. Peters and O'Fallon, kind of in line with yours, did do indoor only for certain, for their, and again, I'm not sure how much that one's going to hold up, but we'll see, there's probably no one that's going to try to build an outdoor one in St. Peters and O'Fallon, I'm guessing, so it may never come to pass, but they did put indoor only into their regulations.
And I guess, sort of stepping back, I would say that we tried to consult with the departments, and sort of, you know, this involves the Health Department, community development, the Police Department, finance, all of those, and really wanted to get something before you all, that then you could look at, and it's often easier, I think, for you to say, "I don't like this part, I want to change this part," than if you were just writing on a blank slate, so, you know, that was just an option that we chose as a start for the point of discussion, and then certainly you all can choose and decide which regulations you would like to enact.
If we're on this particular grid, I, I would say that I'd be opposed to 6:00 AM start time, I don't, I don't think that we have any real need to go buy your marijuana at 6:00 in the morning, and the, the other communities within St. Charles County seem to do either nine or eight, or left it blank, which is interesting.
And those that left it blank and are marked with NA, they have no restrictions, so technically those could operate 24 hours a day.
Wow.
Yeah, well, Mike, if you think about it, if, if we're really, for the, the real purpose is medical marijuana, so if it's somebody in a lot of pain, that's, that's what we're discussing here, and I agree with you, but if it's for medical marijuana, it's totally different.
Joe, I think you made, you made a very good comment earlier, though, these, I fully anticipate the medical marijuana to become recreational, and I think it's, I think, and we're not supposed to say that, but...
Well, that's the absurdity of it, there's two things I find that are so absurd about this whole process, is that, number one, it's called a miracle, medical marijuana card, you don't get a medical antibiotic card, you know, you have to get a prescription every time you need it. This is just absurd, you get a card, and you go get it anytime you want. If this is true medical, it should be prescribed on a script.
It'll be over-prescribed, and you know this is going to be...
It is, really, because you can only have four ounces per 30-day period, so in, in theory, you can, because you can buy however many antibiotics, for example, you can only buy so many off that prescription that they give you, and it has maybe 30 over that time period, so in, in a sense, it is what you're saying, it just may not be done that particular way.
Okay, the only, the other absurdity about it is the, the funding for it, there, there is nothing that I see where the funding goes to administration or policing. It seems like it should be self-policed and self-administered, for the funding that comes from it.
Do we get taxes from, taxes from this?
Sales, that's for administration.
And license fees?
Yes, well, do we, and I, I realize we're running out of time, and you still have slides, so I'll, I'll hold my questions till you finish.
Okay, we...
Let me point out one thing else that's even more absurd about this whole thing, is that the state of Missouri has done a lot of work, and they're tracing marijuana as everything from seeds all the way to being dispensed, and yet they've, the state has failed to implement the prescription drug thing, where, okay, so for marijuana, they're tracing it from seed to sale, but for opioids, you can dock shop, and the state really doesn't care, that's, that, to me, that's totally absurd, but go for it, okay?
Sorry, didn't...
Good point.
That's all right. The last couple of slides, I just wanted to point out some of the areas that this ordinance doesn't address, and that we'll need to get back to at some point. So one of them, as the county executive already mentioned, were our municipal court ordinances, that right now, any amount of marijuana possession is prohibited, so we will likely want to change those to say that any person who is possessing their marijuana must have their patient card, must have under the amount that's allowed, and Amendment Two allows us to be able to demand that they produce that card if they have the marijuana, and of course, the prohibitions on public consumption or driving under the influence of marijuana would stay in place. For employment and personnel policies, obviously marijuana is still not decriminalized, and so county employment policies really won't need to change much, certainly, we are still able to say that no employees may use or possess marijuana while they are working, they may not come to work under the influence of marijuana. For public safety positions, we are also able to continue to say that those folks may not use marijuana even off duty, or the same for any folks who carry firearms. One open question that different states have looked at differently is whether marijuana could be a reasonable accommodation for disabilities, and that's just one thing that we're going to have to sort of wait and see what Missouri does. The majority of states have said no, that you do not have to accommodate use of marijuana in response to a disability, because it's still illegal under federal law.
Holly, in the construction field, this has become a huge problem, with people operating equipment, and cranes, and bulldozers, and dump trucks, so if you take it illegal, you get authorized by a doctor to smoke marijuana for your headache or whatever it is, and then we do drug testing, right, for people who operate equipment and that kind of thing, right? So, how are we going to defend that, which this is, I don't know if you guys follow, but there's a lot of cases right now on that, so are we going to be able to defend it, or we just don't worry about it?
I think certainly we can and ought to have prohibitions on those folks, you know, using, being impaired by marijuana, of course it's a...
But then you get the HIPAA laws, with what you're reading about this, in the industry, they're starting to say that you can't, they, they cross, right? I go, I guess that's something we're going to have to figure out, but...
Yeah, and like Holly had said, it's, some of it's going to depend on the state laws that come out, that they've been, we've been, we actually recently went to a seminar on this, and it seems like it's a state law.
So when you say police officers, does it include operators of equipment and, and all that other stuff?
Those would be the, the public safety positions of folks who are driving the dump trucks, or those sorts of things, that yes. Now, part of the practical problem is that unlike with alcohol, there's not a great, you know, breathalyzer that you can tell whether there's marijuana in their system, so it would be more based on being able to see signs of impairment.
Do they have big bottles of isine?
Right.
Sorry.
Yes.
That's true.
So, but Amendment Two does specifically say that employees do not have claims for wrongful discharge or discrimination, or any other causes of action, based on employers prohibiting employees from being under the influence of marijuana at work, or of disciplining employees, including an up-to-termination for working or trying to work under the influence of marijuana, so at least that is explicitly in the text of Amendment Two.
Does our ordinance need to clarify the timeframe, like when you do periodic random drug testing, and they said that they smoked it three days ago, or a week ago, but it still stays in their bloodstream for what, 30 days, so, do we need to clarify that?
I think that that, there probably will be, we'll want to look closely at that, and think about what sorts of clarifications and changes we may need. I just wanted to flag this for you all, to let you know that this bill will not be the last word on medical marijuana, and so the criminal portions and the employment portions are things that will still be outstanding.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Seeing none, I wish to close the work session.
Mr. Chairman, if we just been, the timeline, just so the, the council gets a good idea of what's going to happen.
Yes, we're almost there.
All right.
So for the timeline, this is the timeline set forth by the state, that on June 4th, the application started to be available, on July 4th, applications for the qualifying patients and their caregivers began to be submitted, those have to be approved by the state within 30 days, so there is some additional messiness, that 30 days from now, people will start getting their cards, even though there is no legal way for them to have or possess or buy marijuana. Then on August 3rd is when the state begins accepting those facility license applications, and then December, the deadline for approval of all those, of all of those August 3rd applications is then December 31st, with everyone being able to start on January 1st, and I imagine businesses will want to get started as quickly as they can after that, so...
Do we know in their application process, that, you know, that they can start turning in as less than a month from now, do they need to identify their, their site, if there's going to be a facility?
Yes, so they will have...
So we have to get our, we have to get our rules in place, so that anybody that does want to conduct this type of business in St. Charles County has to know what our rules are going to be about where they can locate...
Correct.
Prior to August 3rd, so they can get their applications in.
Yes, so the bill provides that they will be getting a zoning...
A lot of extra time.
They'll be getting a zoning confirmation, once this is passed and enacted, and so we'll be able to provide those to them, you know, ideally, they'll have some idea based on your discussion, you know, to know even before the bill is passed, where that might be. So this month, we're doing the time, place, and manner ordinances, and the zoning planning and business licenses, and then any ordinance with penalty provisions, such as any of our ordinances, ordinance violations would have to be passed at the November 25th council meeting at the latest, to then be in effect by January 1st, 2020.
Okay, all right, very good.
Thank you.
I think this is going to require a lot more discussion, probably a lot more work sessions.
It's on tonight, huh?
I know, but...
So we can, we can have a little conversation, but I agree, yeah.
Okay, all right, then I'm going to close the work session, and we'll go on, and we'll take a three-minute break, and start our regular meeting.